Good evening. Now, I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for September 14th, 2020, and call upon Councilmember Nancy Ford.
Would you join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
All present accounted for. We have minutes from the August 17th, 2020 meeting. Seems like so long ago. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as presented. We have four proclamations tonight. First is a proclamation for Constitution Week. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Thank you, Mayor. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and, boy, inalienable rights? There we go. Can't get that one out tonight. The Daughters of the American Revolution began the tradition of celebrating the Constitution for one week in September, beginning in 1955. During Constitution Week, citizens are asking to reflect on their responsibilities to protect and defend the Constitution and study the historical events which led to its framing in September of 1787. Following tonight's reading, the proclamation will be sent to the Dr. Susan Anderson Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, whose members are honored to receive this proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the magnificent document, its anniversary, and patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado hereby recognize the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020, to be Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this garden of our liberties. This is dated the 14th day of September 2020, signed by the mayor and all of city council.
And we do not have a representative of the Daughters here tonight. They frequently come, and it's always great to see them, and certainly understand the limitations right now on some people being able to attend, but we will forward that on. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am presenting tonight a recognition of the 150th anniversary of the Arvada United Methodist Church. In brief, on Sunday, September 20th, 2020, the Arvada United Methodist Church, located at 6750 Carr Street, will be officially celebrating its 150th anniversary of ministry and mission in Arvada and beyond. As early as 1859, Methodist circuit riders, men riding on horseback to evangelize the new frontier, would visit gold miners working in Ralston Creek. In 1863, the first Methodist Episcopal Sunday School was held, and the first Methodist religious services were held in the new log home of Oliver Graves, whose descendants continue in the church today. In 1870, the church was officially founded with 30 members, including Benjamin Wadsworth and his family. In 1876, Wadsworth donated the building site for the church building at the corner of Webster and 57th Streets, where the foundation was eventually laid in 1889. Keeping up with the growing community, commerce, and development of Arvada in the 1920s, the church changed its name to Arvada Community Church, Methodist Episcopal, and committed to build a new building to serve as a center of social, recreational, and religious life, which was completed in 1923 and dedicated in 1931. Incorporated as a town in 1904, Arvada officially became a city in 1951, at which time the church had 629 members and added an additional educational wing. Under the leadership of Reverend Earl Hannah, pastor of Arvada Methodist Church for more than 30 years, the church has purchased a five-and-a-half acre site at 68th and Carr Streets at a cost of $5,000 per acre. Church membership topped 1,100 and moved into a new church building on May 19th, 1963, where the church continues to gather and worship to this day. On Sunday, September 20th, 2020, there will be an outdoor parking lot worship service in celebration of the 10:00 a.m., which will be led by the United Methodist Bishop of Colorado, Wyoming, Montana, and Utah, Bishop Karen Oliveto. All are welcomed and encouraged to attend at this time of celebration, which will begin a year of festivities, memories, and planning for the next 150 years of vital ministry in this community. And if I may add, they also operate a preschool that my little girl attends. She has for two years now. They are wonderful, caring, kind individuals, and I cannot thank you enough for what you do for my own family. So, thank you. Receiving the certificate of recognition on behalf of the congregation tonight are Reverend Amy Gerhart, lead pastor of the church, and Camille Parker, lay leader.
One down to the podium, if you would. I do love that 150 Mass. That's great. If you'd like to make a comment, feel free to, if you just go up to the microphone.
As a lifelong member of Arvada United Methodist Church, I started when I was six. I have my third grade Bible signed by Reverend Hannah. And all I would like to say is that the city of Arvada and the community that we live in is special. And I encourage anybody who wants to be encouraged, emboldened, and loved by their community to stop by our church sometime. We're also online, so you can find us at arvadaumc.org.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are so fortunate to have the Methodist Church as part of our community for so long, and all of our faith-based community. They fit a very important need, and we rely upon what you do so much. So, thank you. And congratulations. Next, I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am very excited about this proclamation. So, this is a proclamation for National Code Compliance Month. The City of Arvada takes a moment to reflect on the work done by the code inspectors and staff who are committed to promoting safety in our homes, work, and in our community through knowledge, application, and enforcement of city codes and ordinances. Established in October 2005 by the American Association of Code Compliance and President George W. Bush, National Code Compliance Month reminds us of highly visible and often challenging role code enforcement officers fill in our community. Sergeant Gabe Evans is present to accept on behalf of Arvada's code enforcement officers, and I am going to read this proclamation. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of citizens living in communities throughout the United States through the enforcement of local building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, property maintenance, and other codes and ordinances, and whereas code enforcement officers have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities, and whereas the role of many code officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes in communities impacted economically, and whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly qualified professionals who work to prevent neighborhood deterioration, enhance and ensure safety, and preserve property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by code enforcement officers throughout our country and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado hereby proclaim October 2020 as National Code Compliance Month and call upon Arvadans to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Dated this 14th day of September 2020, signed by the mayor and members of council. Gabe is on Zoom, so I can't hand this to you, but high five, my friend. And I'm gonna take a picture. I have to take a picture so that I can post it online.
We can definitely set something like that up.
Oh, I just did it, actually.
Perfect. Thank you very much, councilmember. Obviously, as the supervisor over the code enforcement and animal management unit, you know, it's my honor and privilege to be here to accept this tonight, but really, all of the credit goes to my team and to the fantastic work that they do every day, day in and day out, and then also the tremendous support that we receive, all the way up the chain of command through the police department to the city manager's office and the city council. So, thank you very much.
Very good. And our final proclamation tonight will be presented by Councilmember Nancy Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the privilege of reading this proclamation that had, that's somewhat sobering. And I'd like to just mention that it was Councilmember Pfeiffer who brought this to our attention due to the fact that his family, his son's school were very much affected by this. And I too have been very much affected by this. I have a number of friends who have had children that have committed suicide, and it's not a pleasant situation at all. September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to share resources and stories in an effort to shed light on this highly taboo and stigmatized topic. We use this month to reach out to those affected by suicide, raise awareness, and connect individuals with suicidal ideation to treatment services. Every year, thousands of individuals die by suicide, leaving behind their friends and family members to navigate the tragedy of loss. In many cases, friends and families affected by a suicide loss, often called suicide loss survivors, are left in the dark. Too often, the feelings of shame and stigma prevent them from talking openly. While suicide prevention is important to address year-round, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month provides a dedicated time to come together with collective passion and strength around a difficult topic. The truth is, we can all benefit from honest conversations about mental health conditions and suicide, because just one conversation can change a life. Officer Kelly Lachuga is scheduled to accept the proclamation on behalf of Safe to Tell and the Arvada Police Department. Officer Lachuga is an instructor in mental health, first aid, and a crisis intervention team coach who teaches classes on a regional level and is very passionate regarding crisis intervention. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Suicide Prevention Awareness Month is dedicated to the role everyone in our community can play in preventing suicide, and all community members are encouraged to know the signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas preventing suicide requires the efforts of many, from individual friends, families, neighbors, and coworkers, to government agencies and community organizations from a wide range of sectors. And whereas this is a public health issue, and each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, coworkers, loved ones, and often the entire community, and whereas the goal is to speak openly about the importance of mental health and the impacts of suicide, to help remove the surrounding stigmas and to direct those in need to the appropriate support services. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado hereby recognize September 2020 to be Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and encourage all residents to take the time to check in with their family, friends, and neighbors on a regular basis. A simple phone call, message, or safe hug can go a long way. And this is dated today, the 14th day of September 2020, by the mayor and all of city council. And I'd just like to add that the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255. And if anyone is ever thinking of suicide, please call that number.
Well, Officer Lachuga's coming down. Do you mind if I have a few words?
Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer, please.
I just want to say that, well, thank you, Officer Lachuga, for all you do around that. But
Thank you.
It's unfortunate evils of our community sometimes that you and the officers and Safe to Tell and all the other healthcare providers to help us through this, but I just want to shout out and discuss that the Safe to Tell program is one of the best things that have happened for kids, to be able to call in. And I know, unfortunately, some interactions personally and with friends around, if Safe to Tell wasn't there, certain people might not be here with us. So, I just wanted to just highlight the importance of it, and especially now with the COVID situation, people being at home and isolated. Not only do we see a rise in attempted suicides in teen and suicides, but also with the adults. And right now is a time when we need to band better and get closer to our community to help those that are in need. So, thank you for your efforts and all the officers and our first responders and coresponders that go along. And I know the Fire District is doing a lot of things around mental health, so I just wanted to thank you all for all you do every day around this matter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And we'll now move on to public comment. I understand Preston Gibson would like to address city council this time.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the city council, thank you for the time this evening. As you're aware, I am very soon retiring from Excel Energy after a term of about 10 years with the company. It's been a great ride. It's bittersweet, of course, to announce your retiring because you have so many friends, such as you on the city council and so many people in the community that I've made over many years. And so, I've seen, I've been around for, since 2003, working at Jefferson Economic Council, then picked up this job in 2010. And again, I've been here for about 10 years. So, I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen a lot of changes in the community. I've seen Arvada grow. I've seen it become a better and stronger city. I've seen the revitalization efforts that you've done. I've seen the downtown grow and expand. I've seen the light rail come and all you've done out on 58th. And it's just incredible to see what's happened. So, I'm gonna kind of miss seeing that. I'll still be watching that from the sidelines, but Arvada's a great city. You've been great to work with over the years. Every one of you I've worked with on some project, some issue over time. And I think we've always come to some good, amicable resolution on everything. Sometimes things don't work as quickly as they should or could, but we always come to some good resolution on the items that are important to the city. So, it's been great for us, and we as a company just greatly appreciate you as a customer. I just want to say that. With that, I want to introduce Craig Eiker. Craig is going to be taking over for me in this area. The good news about Craig is he is not a greenhorn. Craig knows what he's doing. He's very well experienced. In fact, he has five years more experience in this role than I do in a different area. So, I'm gonna sort of hand it over at this point in time for Craig just to say a few words. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. Craig, go ahead.
Why, thank you, Preston. Hi. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to meet you and some of you again, because I know I've run into, I know I've run into the mayor. In fact, we played golf together at CML some years ago, and I can only imagine that he remembers how bad that experience was, having me on the foursome. But a pleasure to meet you folks again tonight. I'm most recently, currently in the role of area manager, the same role that Preston has in the Boulder region.
We'll be easier. We'll be easier.
I can't, I can't help but tell you how many times I've told Preston, boy, that better be the case. Not to, not to talk ill of
I've told him it's easy. I've told him everything's going smoothly, so.
I don't want to get into Not to speak ill of another city, right? We all love our cities in Colorado. In any case, I want to, my job is going to be to try to catch up to Preston's pace in your region. He has, from what I understand, a tremendous reputation, and I know that the cities are running very well from our perspective, and I want you to know that I want to do everything I can to uphold the standards that Preston has set. And I think I look forward very much to working with you. I know Arvada pretty darn well. I live in Golden, so I'm not too far away. Up in Coal Creek Canyon, Golden, anyway, that's the mailing address. My best friend, my best buddy, lives on Allison in Old Town, so I'm very familiar with Arvada. My office will be in Arvada, as Preston's was, so I'll be really close by and look forward to working with all of you.
Well, you've got big shoes to fill, as you well know, in terms of Preston's been great for, for a resource for us at Excel, and we know you will be too. Please give me your offline, please give me your cellphone number, so I can get ahold of you as quickly as I was able to get ahold of Preston.
You bet. It's coming your way.
Very good. Well, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
You bet. Congratulations on your new position with us. And Preston, thank you for your years of service, both at Jefferson Economic Council and then with Excel Energy.
Thank you, Mark. It's been a great time, and I'm sure I'll see you around. I'm not dropping off with face of the earth. I'll see you at some community meetings and so on. So, anyway, thank you so much for the time this evening.
Thank you both. Is there anybody?
Oh, anybody questions?
I don't think we've got any questions for you at this time, but, boy, I bet we'll have some issues that'll be coming up that we'll want to chat about.
You bet.
Very good. Kristen Rush, is there anybody else that's signed up to speak during open public comment?
No, we don't have anyone else.
Very good. Then I'll move on to our consent agenda. We have a few items on the consent agenda tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing a first amendment to the agreement between Arvada and Felsburg, Holt, and Ullavig in the amount of $30,000 for additional on-call traffic engineering services. Second is a resolution authorizing a change order number one to the purchase order agreement between Arvada and Martin Marietta for hot mix asphalt for street maintenance in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Third one's a resolution authorizing a first amendment to an IGA for creation of a regional bomb squad between Jefferson County and the City of Arvada. Next one's a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and HDR Engineering for 2020 sanitary sewer master plan services in an amount not to exceed approximately $342,000. Fifth one's a resolution authorizing contract amendment one to a State of Colorado Department of Human Services contract between Arvada and the State of Colorado for the Arvada Police Department Co-Responder Program. Next one's a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Application for the Arvada Police Department. Seventh one is a resolution authorizing a license agreement between Arvada and Union Pacific Railroad for one underground fiber optic wire line crossing. And the final resolution on the consent agenda is for authorizing a construction contract between Arvada and RN Civil Construction for the Ralston Water Treatment Plant Fluoride System Improvements in an amount not to exceed a little over $532,000. Those are all the consent agenda items. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that items R 20-067 through 20-074 be approved.
Motion's for approval of the consent agenda. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, first reading, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-025, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the State of Colorado to allow the use of Department of Revenue Sales and Use Tax Software, SUTS, system, be approved on first reading. Order published in full and public hearing to be set for October 5th, 2020, at 6:15 p.m.
Motion's for approval on first reading. This is something that's going through a lot of the communities right now as we come online with the Department of Revenue for sales tax collection. That passes seven to zero. We'll have a public hearing on it on October the 5th. Next, we'll begin our public hearings. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20021, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code through the adoption of general and administrative provisions and the adoption by reference of the 2018 International Building Code, the 2018 International Residential Code, the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2018 International Existing Building Code, the 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2018 International Mechanical Code, the 2018 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the State of Adopted National Electoral Code, and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council.
This is something that we do approximately every three or six years, which is the best practice for ensuring the most recent safety provisions and recent innovations in material science and construction methods that are utilized being put into our code. You may recall, we had a workshop back on August the 10th regarding the code. Of note, our team is proposing a modification for licensing exemptions, allowing property owners of single-family, duplex, and townhomes constructed in accordance with the International Residential Code to obtain permits without licenses for certain types of work regardless of owner occupant status. Modification of the three general contractor licensing categories will align the work that can be performed and be permitted and performed by license, by a license holder with both licensing test content and with licensing categories in surrounding jurisdictions. In addition, our team is proposing a three-year renewal periods for electrical and plumbing license holders to match the state license renewal period. There are a number of technical changes that were reviewed with you back on August the 10th that are stipulated in the council report. We also did publish modification of the, that were based on the council workshop feedback, posted that on August the 11th, and also sent information out to a number of stakeholders who have done development work in the city. The Building Code Advisory Board did recommend approval of this ordinance, and if you have any technical questions, Breida Van Horn is certainly here and can answer them much better than I can on the Building Code, and certainly we're recommending approval of the ordinance as presented.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to address city council on this particular item? Kristen, do we have anybody?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one via Zoom.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you.
Okay. Hi. Thank you for listening to me tonight. My name is Carrie Kennedy. I am the president of the Jefferson County Childcare Association. I am a voting council member for the Triad Early Childhood Council, and I'm also a owner and operator of a licensed family childcare here in Arvada for over 20 years. I would like to speak to you tonight about one specific area of this ordinance, and that is on page 43, it is the section that has is on page 43, it is the section that has to do with fire sprinkler systems for family childcare homes. And what is being proposed is that if a licensed family childcare home serves more than eight children, that we would have residential fire sprinklers installed. This is something that has been on the topic of conversation for multiple years in Arvada, as well as the entire state and nation with childcare. I don't know if council members are very aware of the licensing regulations that family childcare homes are under. There's quite a few regulations, especially with the safety of children. We have to do fire drills, we have to have smoke detectors, smoke extinguishers, fire extinguishers, and multiple other codes that we follow and rules with regulations. And to my knowledge, there has not been a fatality in a licensed family childcare home in the last 20 years in Arvada. And a lot of that is due to the precautions that we take, the trainings that we take, and the oversight that we see. What I'm asking for tonight is that the city council delay the vote on this particular measure regarding the fire sprinkler system. The childcare community was not made aware that this was going to be heard tonight until, I think it was 2:30 p.m. I happened to stumble on it by accident, and so we have not had time to prepare to comment on this. I was able to reach out to a few community members. I believe some emails were sent in to the council stating that we are asking for a delay of vote on this particular line item. Even Bill Jager with the Colorado Children's Campaign has sent in an email asking the city council to delay. While we promote and are very strong advocates for child safety, we do have concerns that this measure is going to have unintended consequences. By limit, by requiring fire sprinklers when there are more than eight children, you are going to require several licensed family childcare homes to limit the number of children they have. The state has two license types that allow for more than eight children. That is the Experienced Provider License, which has to have their specific training, and a certain number of years of licensure, as well as the Large Home, which allows up to 12 children to be cared for with two care providers. In both of these circumstances with these license types, we would be limited below what the state allows us to have if this ordinance passes. I know of at least four licensed large group homes. This would eliminate at least 16 licensed childcare spots in just these four programs. There are multiple providers who have the Experienced Provider License, which would limit them one additional child. Not only that, but Governor Polis just recently, I believe last Friday, passed Executive Order D 2020-188, which allows learning pods to bypass current licensing requirements. Part of that executive order allowed licensed family childcare homes and centers to have one additional school-aged child beyond their license capacity, and not count their current school-aged children in their capacity if they are doing remote learning. Just a few weeks ago, the Arvada City Chamber sent out a survey to all licensed programs asking about availability for school-aged children. There is a childcare crisis right now. There is not enough licensed spots for children who need it, and this ordinance would further limit that. How this is going to affect our families is, it's going to push our families and our children into unlicensed and unregulated settings. Just on August 26, 2020, there was an infant who died in an illegal, unlicensed family childcare setting. The provider had 16 children. This is what's going to happen if we limit the number of children that licensed facilities can have. Families are going to become desperate, and they're going to go to unlicensed settings where there's no regulation, no oversight, and no rules. We really, really need to keep children in licensed settings. And so what I'm asking the council to do tonight is to please delay the vote on this section, and please do a little more research and find out what the consequences would be. A fire sprinkler system for my home would cost between $20,000 to $40,000, and that is a rough build of exposed piping in my home. So if you could imagine what your home would look like with fire sprinkler systems hanging out of your ceiling, it's not a very attractive site, and I'm not disputing the fact that fire sprinklers save lives. I believe they're important, and they're a wonderful tool. I just am afraid of what will happen if this particular wording passes and we limit the number of licensed childcare spots. In 2019, Senate Bill 63 passed to study why there was a decreasing number of family childcare homes and infant toddler spots in Colorado. One of the findings was that city codes had a lot to do with it. Cities were restricting the number of children, and this reduced the number of licensed facilities. It reduced the number of licensed spots for our children. And really, child safety needs to be priority, and wildfire sprinklers does do that. So this is keeping programs licensed and keeping children in licensed programs. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Very good. We did receive a number of emails on this topic, I think a large extent spurred by your, your attention to this, and I think we do have a staff member that's ready to address that issue if we could. A team member, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. I'm Brita Van Horn. I'm Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development and the Building Official. So I'll explain a little bit about the daycare provisions as they're in the ordinance as it's been proposed. First of all, these provisions actually don't apply retroactively to any of the existing daycare facilities, so the concern about existing facilities having to add a sprinkler system or reduce the number of kids is not actually going to happen. This is basically for new facilities that come into existence after the effective date of the ordinance. I'll just mention, too, Stephen Parker's here for the Building Code and Fire Code Adoption tonight to answer questions, but he was on the Senate Bill, or the Senate Committee in 2018 also talking about this with that group. So the, the, kind of the conundrum about this is that the intent of Appendix M, which is a way for us to look at daycare facilities under the Residential Code versus throwing it all into the Commercial Code when you get above five children, is that the intent of Appendix M was that a house would have a sprinkler system because of the other parts of the code, and then the Appendix M would come into play and all of those provisions would apply. Because we're amending that out, we felt it was appropriate, just, you know, looking at risk factors, to have a certain limit on the size of a new home daycare facility, just because these, you know, and I'll talk about the Senate Bill a little bit, just with the provisions of that, but when we're talking about the old, before COVID, and there were daycares and people brought their kids to daycare, it was typically younger kids who weren't in school, or school-aged kids in the summer, but, you know, you had a large number of very small children who were not really, let's say, easy to wrangle, or did not take direction, and you had, in an emergency, trying to get them all to exit the building is kind of hard. So we felt it was appropriate to pick a number that aligned with the most prevalent state daycare licensing category, which is the eight children, and we're talking about eight children that are not related to you. So if you happen to have three of your own kids, they don't count in that number. So you could have, in that scenario, 11 kids, three of your own, and eight daycare kids in your home, and you could do that all without a sprinkler system. There's a few requirements about, you know, egress windows and basements, and smoke detectors and things that very much mirror the state requirements. But ultimately, you know, eight is a number that we thought was appropriate based on that the state licensing category is, the eight being so predominant is the, the main category that people have. And just looking at the risk factor with all those small children in a normal daycare setting is kind of what we're basing that on. You know, the number could be nine and align with a different category. It could be 12. It's really a choice. It's about risk versus, you know, benefits of having the sprinkler system, which provides an extra added layer of protection, and additional time to exit if there is an emergency, a fire emergency in particular. So a little bit about the state law, too, and I've had some conversations this afternoon with Emily Grog, and Rachel may be able to add to this as well, but I think we also have, through our emergency provisions with COVID, we have the ability to mirror these executive orders from the governor that make some tweaks to the provisions in the daycare provisions that we have adopted at a local level and maybe can find a way to allow these to happen during the COVID period. Some of these include adding a single additional child to a home daycare, two additional children to a commercial-type daycare facility, and then these learning pods, which are people who kind of through a collaborative agreement agree to share, you know, homeschooling or whatever with their children. And I'll just mention that the state executive order allows eight children at least 10 years of age to, to be together in one of those learning pods, and then if the children are younger than 10, I can't remember the age group, but it's essentially like preschool, kindergarten through nine years of age, they can have five children in a home in that kind of setting. So I think there's some indication that the number of kids, in any case, makes a difference. Like, there's, the lower the number, the easier it is to manage, and the safety provisions are easier to ensure for those kind of facilities, even if they're not licensed and they're allowed under that order. So our intention is not to, again, make changes to existing facilities, add sprinklers to existing daycare homes. It's really moving forward, how do we deal with this in a way that makes sense safety-wise and also aligns with the vast majority of the licensing facilities at the state level.
Very good. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council from the public before I go to council questions? Okay, I'll go with Ms. Ford.
So I, I just wanted to follow up with Ms. Morris about the question that I had on the infestation. Is that something that would be put into this code, or would that be somewhere else? So in other words, I was asked her if there was a possibility that if an infestation problem was occurring where the city had to mitigate it immediately, that that would be at the cost of the owner, but would give the city that ability to mitigate it immediately?
We do have that ability. So there are provisions in our code that prohibit vermin infestations, both at the exterior and interior of a property, and if it reached a point where it became a nuisance, similar to other nuisances that we deal with in our code, we do have the ability as a city to abate that nuisance and to charge the property owner for that cost. For the most part, in most situations like that, there's provisions for a hearing and all that kind of due process. If there was an emergency situation where the situation had become so dire that we could not wait for that to occur, there are also provisions in the code that would allow the city manager to summarily abate something like that, and then we would deal with the process from there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for Brita Van Horn, if, if you would. So I think our public comment mentioned the state law. In a, in a place that's in the state that's not in a home rural municipality, what is a state law as far as home daycare centers and sprinklers, or is there?
Well, in a, in a city or county or other municipal-type jurisdiction where there is no adopted code, the, I guess what would happen if you had a daycare in that, in that area is if there was a zoning code, you would need a zoning sign-off from the zoning authority in that jurisdiction, and then you would apply for the state license, and there would be no oversight and no requirements conceivably from the Building Code perspective. So you would follow the state licensing rules with local zoning if there was any-
Okay.
-as part of that as well.
And, and so the state licensing rules don't speak to fires, the necessity of fire sprinklers at a certain number or not?
No, the state is silent on the issue of sprinklers in general, to my knowledge. I don't think it says anything even in the commercial realm.
Right.
From the documentation we receive when we're coordinating, it says, you know, follow the local code, is what it says on the paperwork that we fill out for the state.
Okay. Let me ask you a, a second question, and that is, of the in-home daycare, licensed-in-home daycare setups that we have in the City of Arvada, do we have many of them that are, hold more than eight children that are not related to the, to the people who are in there?
So the, the last time I looked, and admittedly, they've added this nine category with the Experienced Provider, which is, I think, teachers mostly, that is a new category that I'm not familiar with, so I don't have data on that. But at the time we looked at this, back when, when this discussion got started, we did an analysis, and there were 100 and, I think I told you this at the, the workshop, but I think there were 114, and I'm, I may be off a couple here, but 114 facilities, and I think all but four or five of them were eight and under. And at that time, there was some question about whether it was your own children or, you know, children that weren't related to you, and so that, that number could be skewed because we've always had a hard time matching up state categories, because there are so very many of them. But it was, it was, it was, it was well in excess of 90% of the categories were those eight and under. So I suspect if that same type of facility continues to grow, that we would see very few that would require any kind of sprinkler system just because of that number.
Right, okay.
It's hard to predict the future because this is obviously evolving somewhat quickly at the state level as well.
Right, yeah, okay. Thank you. No, that's, I think that's informative. You know, the question for me here is the, the balance between the cost of, of daycare, which obviously, you know, spring, adding, putting sprinkler systems in so somebody can run a daycare out of their house is, is prohibitive. I don't believe anybody would probably do that. And, and then, of course, balancing that against the risk and the, and the safety factor. So it's good to know the lay of the land about where we are now. So thank you for that information, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Any other council questions? If not, I would request a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-21, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code through the adoption of general and administrative provisions and the adoption by reference of the 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Residential Code, the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2018 International Existing Building Code, the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code, the 2018 International Mechanical Code, the 2018 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the State Adopted National Electrical Code, and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof, be approved on final reading, numbered 4738, and ordered published by title only. And I'll make a quick comment to my motion. I'm going to be voting yes on this. I think this is, while we do this every third year or so, it's one of the more important things we do. I think this council has appropriately looked in depth at this very, very deliberately, and, and modified this code as little as possible, but the, the appropriate amounts to, to, for our community. And I think this question about sprinklers in daycare facilities is a perfect example of that. I, I want to note, the key component there is, is that existing daycare facilities get to continue, that, that there will be no hardship or, or nothing imposed on them, and the most common in-home daycare situation will also not be impacted by this either. So I think it's a good example of how the council has done a good job of looking at this and making sure it's well adopted for our community, and so for those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also wanted to make a comment on the motion. I'll be supporting it as well, but I didn't want anybody to think that we were ignoring their emails or the comments that happened at, at public comment on, around the daycare issue. We read all of them, we received them at four, and then we got printed copies. Kristen Rush made sure that we got them in case we didn't see our emails. So we did read them, and we did ask all the questions to make sure that you wouldn't have to go and install a sprinkler system now if you've already had a daycare. So I did want to make sure that we reiterated that, and we, we didn't just blow that off a promise. So I will be supporting it because I think that it's not going to be a burden to anybody that already has a daycare facility, and it sounds to me like we are increasing that number from five to eight, so we are making it a little bit easier than the current code already is. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion in light of the representations from our city team that this is not going to be retroactively enforced and that it's merely proactive, and the fact that the vast, vast majority are eight or less, even looking to future applications for, for licenses and approvals, that the vast, vast majority will meet that requirement. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you for the presentation and the discussion. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 2022, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code through adoption by reference of the 2018 International Fire Code, published by the International- Code Council, and establishing penalties for violation thereof. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is very similar to the item you just considered. The updated model building codes are published by the International Code Council for both building and fire codes and the National Fire Protection Association every three years. These codes are widely adopted by jurisdictions around the country and in various other countries as well, and provide the foundation for creating a safe built environment. We've adopted these newest versions of the code approximately every three or six years, similar to the other codes, which is the best practice for ensuring that the safety provisions and recent innovations in buildings are...building construction are incorporated. So again, we are recommending approval of this ordinance, and if you have any specific questions, we have people here who can answer them.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? Ms. Rush, we have no one signed up. Thank you. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council question or action. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that Council Bill 20-022, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 42 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code through adoption by reference of the 2018 International Fire Code, published by the International Code Council, and establishing penalties for violation thereof, be approved on final reading, numbered 4739, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 2023, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the Regional Transportation District for the management and operation of the Old Town Transit Hub via shared parking and revenue service. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think, as you know, we entered into the operation of the Old Town Transit Hub as a...with an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with Regional Transportation District, with the idea that we would proceed to an intergovernmental agreement as the long-term option for operating the transit hub. We did a lot of work around creating, as we...after we implemented the MOU, did a lot of work about creating incentives to support transit utilization, supporting and promoting economic growth, and improving the customer experience as we looked at what we needed to do to develop the intergovernmental agreement. Back on July the 27th, we presented the intergovernmental agreement, the main business points of the agreement. During a workshop, we had members of our team who provided you with the business points and the operating principles behind the intergovernmental agreement, and encouraged some discussion, which you guys, all of you, the city council, provided us with some excellent feedback, which we accounted for as we finalized the IGA. It's important to note that one of the things that I think is extremely important with this intergovernmental agreement is that we've developed a shared parking agreement, which is intended to provide the strategic approach to how we manage the 600 spaces in the Old Town Hub and operate it more efficiently in order to provide as much capacity as possible for both Old Town visitors and RTD commuters during each peak demand period. The IGA would allow the removal of the segregated parking model. So when you go into the transit hub and you see the signs that say RTD parking here, Old Town, or I'm sorry, public parking here, we are actually...that's going to be phased out, and it will allow parking to occur on any level. The city will manage the users based on license plate readers. The passport app will be asked, and kiosks, which are currently in use, would also be provided. The parking rules would be simplified and posted to each user group, and by that, we will be able to more efficiently utilize the hub. So with that, we are recommending approval of the ordinance that would approve the IGA. I also know that we have members of our team that would be available via Zoom to answer any questions. So if you have any questions, we have members of our team that could certainly provide those answers to you. And again, we're recommending approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Do we have any member of the public signed up to speak on this item? We do not. I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question to follow up on the parking signs, because I was parked in the garage a week or so ago. So the signs that say RTD parking, because that was...I parked there before, but I really was kind of confused on where I could and couldn't park, and in fact, kind of second-guessed myself and hoped that I wasn't going to get a ticket. So those signs will come down, and you can park in any one of the 600 spaces based on how far you want to walk, or how is that going to work?
So I think John Ferruzzi, our mobility manager, is probably the best person to answer that question. John, would you please answer Councilmember Jones's question, and also make sure we don't report him to Laz for the fact that he parked in the wrong spot?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Yes. So hello, members of council, and thank you, Councilmember Jones, for your question. So basically, yes, we would be removing the parking signs that are confusing and letting the public park at any level, managing their stay through the app. And once they're self-reporting their purpose, the app will walk them through that process at that time as to what the limitations are.
Okay, that's great. And so as a consumer and a user, it's going to be clear to me how to get the app. When I...if I drive into the garage and I see, oh, I got to download this app, there's going to be enough signage to allow people time, and it's not going to be a complicated effort to get the app and to get signed in and to do all that.
Correct. Yes. So as part of the recommendations from our consultant, Walker Consulting, that was part of the information that we have prepared to update and help notify the public, both using signage at the entrances and also a communication campaign.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I've got a quick follow-up question for Mr. Ferruzzi, if you don't mind. With the requirement that every space in the garage that somebody use an app to be able to park there, do we have any provisions for folks who are maybe not of the generation or not able to use a smartphone and an app? And I think of, you know, my parents, for instance, would have...would find difficulty with doing something like that. And of course, there's no requirement in your life that you do own a smartphone. There's certainly plenty of people who don't, and I would hate to see them, you know, not able to use that facility because they don't happen to carry a smartphone.
Yep. So for those that don't want to use the app, there are alternative solutions. One is a kiosk that prints basically the information that a user would need. So they would go to the kiosk, put their information in, and get the printed information out of the machine. And another is also something that we're working on that we don't currently have, is pay-by-phone. So once we do go that direction, we will have information about how to call, and I basically do the same transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. You are going to have signage too, right? Here's what I'm just thinking, right? I'm an app girl, totally use the app all day long. I can't use it while I'm driving. I'm going to park. I'm going to go walk out with my app, walk in and talk in, because I'm late for a meeting. This is what I do. And I'm heading out, and then I have to go re-park my car somewhere else, because I'm in the wrong spot. And I've already parked and I'm halfway up Old Wad's. So there's signage, right? You don't have to go to a kiosk and come back and move your car again after the kiosk?
That's correct. Actually, that's part of the simplification that we're aiming for, is that the user doesn't really care, you know, what level we've identified for what purpose. And we're trying to make it as seamless as possible so that, you know, the user could basically park anywhere, walk away, hop on the app, and do their business.
That was a thumbs up from Ms. Moore. Ms. Ford?
I have a question for Mr. Devon. I noticed in the financial impact, we paid $415,000 in 2019 for the operation and maintenance. Is that coming out of our general fund?
Yes.
And do you anticipate that that will continue to be a relevant number for the future in terms of operation and maintenance?
Well, I imagine it will go up as costs increase in order to maintain the transit hub. So, you know, you could consider that a base, and then there would be some escalating costs associated with that as we maintain the transit hub. I think that's one of the reasons why...one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that that number is known to council is because eventually we envision recovering a good portion of that, if not all, out of the parking management program and specifically charging at the appropriate time, which is not now because of the impact of the current conditions, the current pandemic conditions on ridership. But at some point in time, as we...as our consultants had pointed out during the presentation that was made to you on July 27th, we did get close to that 85%. In fact, I think we hit that 85% usage of the transit hub, which would have been the trigger at which time we would have contemplated paid parking. We're not there right now because of the situation, but at some point, we do envision getting there. And then we would implement some form of paid parking. One of the comments...commitments that we made at the city councils, we won't do that without talking to all of you first.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I see no other questions. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-023, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the Regional Transportation District for the management and operation of the Old Town Transit Hub via shared parking and revenue service, be approved on final reading, numbered 4740, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. I'll open our final public hearing for tonight. Council Bill 20024, an ordinance amending Article III Sales and Use Tax and Article V Lodging Tax of Chapter 98 Taxation of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I think all of you know, particularly people like John Marriott, who are involved in the CML Policy Committee, we have a sales tax system in Colorado that is multi...it's multi-jurisdictional, based on home rule and other provisions of our state revised statutes. That's perceived as burdensome by those that are doing business both inside and outside of Colorado. And so as part in association with that situation, we were part of a statewide taxation simplification movement that was organized by the Colorado Municipal League and determined that we should clarify our taxation ordinance while maintaining our integrity of our taxation system and preserving our rights as a home-rule municipality. And so the purpose of this proposed ordinance is to simplify that tax collection process for businesses, including remote sellers. So this would be the individuals, the businesses that are selling from outside the state, and enabling them to take advantage of a simplified sales tax system. The proposed ordinance for these...proposed changes to this ordinance may increase our sales tax collection a bit. We don't want to go out too far on a limb, especially given our conservative outlook on financial projections, but we do believe we will gain some additional revenue in the future as a result of this. And that's not the only reason why we're recommending this ordinance, but we're recommending it because we believe it's the right thing to do, and we're following in step with a number of other municipalities in the state that have already changed their codes. I wanted to mention a little bit here how all of this came about. In addition to the advocacy and work that Councilmember Marriott and others from CML have done, we've also had Ezekiel Vasquez on our team, our revenue manager, who has worked very hard with the Colorado Municipal League. He served on a task force beginning in 2017 on simplifying the sales tax code. In 2018, he became a co-chair of the Sales and Use Tax Committee. That was at the forefront of the updates to these...to the simplification of the sales tax code, and then also became a member of the Colorado Sales and Use Tax System, the Suits Executive Committee, which you approved that on first reading tonight, thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Miller's reading of that item. It'll be for a future public hearing date, and that will be the last step in being able to actually implement this system in accordance with the work of the state. Also, Brian Archer has also been involved in the Sales and Use Tax Simplification Committee. We've also had advocacy by Ed Rothschild at the state level, owner of Alpha Graphics, and we've had our state legislator, Tracy Kraft Tharp, involved in this, and Cami Welch has also hosted a number of meetings where we've discussed this. So I guess I would want to call your attention to the fact that we've had a lot of Arvadans that have been involved in this effort. They've looked out for the best interest of not only our community, but all home-rule municipalities in Colorado, and we believe this is the right thing to do, and therefore, we're very enthusiastically recommending its approval.
Okay. Any additional presentation, Mr. Devon, on this topic? Fair enough. Open it up for city council questions or action. Ms. Simpson?
I actually just wanted to commend Councilmember Marriott for his hard work on this. Thank you very much, John, and as well as Representative Kraft Tharp and everybody else who put hard work on this. I will be enthusiastically supporting the motion.
Ms. Ford?
So I'd like to make a recommendation on language on page 10, where it says enforcement officer means the city manager or other person designated by him. I would recommend that we change that language to the same or similar language as page 11, where we talk about the finance director, and instead of saying a gender term, we say, "or such person, or such other person designated by the city..." city manager, since we do have an IDEA committee, and I think that that would be more appropriate in 2020.
I think that's an appropriate recommendation. So whoever makes the motion? Mr. Fiver?
If there's not any other questions, I'll make the motion.
You may.
Okay. I move that Council Bill 20-024, an ordinance amending Article III Sales and Use Tax and Article V Lodging Tax of Chapter 98 Taxation of the Arvada City Code, be approved in final reading, number 4741, and ordered published by title only, with the amendment to page 10, changing the quote "him" to "person" or appropriate language.
Throughout the document.
Throughout the document. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. I will be supporting this, and thank you for the kind words. I would have to say, however, that citizens like Ed Rothschild and Brian Archer and Ezekiel Vasquez, and of course, Tracy Kraft Tharp, really did all the heavy lifting on this, and I want to commend them for that. This is good for cities, it's good for the state, and it's good for business, because we have, you know, a level playing field and certainty of rules. So thank you to all of those people and the ones I didn't name who were also involved. This is a difficult subject. It's good work, and thank you all for what you've done.
Very good. And at the Metro Mayor's Caucus, we've had several discussions about this, and I can tell you that Arvada has been recognized on a regional basis as being a real leader in this. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Kristin Rush, do we have anybody that signed up to speak under public comment at this time? We do not. Reports from city council, let me begin. We are in receipt, and I acknowledge receipt of a request for reconsideration by Lori Drenka of our recent decision on the Grandview Station project. I would ask if any member of the prevailing side, so the five individuals who voted in favor of that project, if any of them are going to seek reconsideration states. So now, if not, we'll consider this matter complete. I see no lights of anyone wishing to seek reconsideration. Are there any other city council reports? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make one quick report. So Nancy and I are the liaisons with the Old Town Bid Organization down in Old Town, and I just want to report, we met last month, or actually, a couple weeks ago, and discussed about how the businesses are doing in Old Town. The businesses seem to be very favorable to the street closure that's happened, and they're discussing the ramifications of it going a little longer, a lot longer, or more than that. I think there's lots of work to be done, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were all up to speed to know that that's quite an engaged group, definitely speaking to not only the businesses on those streets- engaged group, definitely speaking to not only the businesses on those streets, but everyone in Old Town, as well as some residents. And that discussion will continue, and I will continue to report back how those are going.
Good. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was sent on the visitor center board, and I just wanted to make sure that viewers are aware that the Arvada Historical Society is hosting an important
Easy for you to say.
Thank you. Anniversary cemetery tour, it's the Seventeenth Annual Cemetery Tour. It will take place on September 26th, that is a Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Please contact the Arvada Historical Society if you're interested in that. It should be a lot of fun. Otherwise, I believe there is also the Arvada Community Gardens are having an event on the 19th, a free chili roasting and apple pressing at the garden, which is 8:00 a.m. to noon. So some good events, social distancing, mask wearing, and a little bit of fall fun that we can still have this year.
Very good. Mr. Devon, anything from the city manager's office at this point?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Rachel Morris, anything from the city attorney's office?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned, and oh, yes, by the way, go Broncos.